Good evening. The July 15th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the City of Longview is now called to order. Commissioner Heath Hamblin will now lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Do you bow with me? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to conduct business of the city. We pray for good discussion, dear God, and we pray for your divine wisdom as we contemplate our decisions here tonight. Dear God, we lift up all those that, all those families that are suffering in central Texas, and we just ask for, for your comfort to be bestowed upon them, dear God, and we just ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, approval of the June 17th, 2025 minutes from our last meeting in June. Has everyone had a chance to look at them? If so, are there any corrections? If not, I will now entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Much approved or a second?
Second.
All those motion a second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion approved. We have now reached the citizen comment portion of our meeting. The portion of this citizen comment are comments made other than the public hearing items we have on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please wait until the time to speak. Please begin by stating your name and address for the public record. On the consent agenda, we are now to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public or applicant would like an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. Would anyone like for an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion? Being done, I will now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and opposition to the applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The commission are also considered plaits. The procedures for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. First staff, second the applicant, third the general public, those in support of and in opposition to the request. If you are part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the commission, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the commission will vote on the request. Zoning requests and the planning of zoning commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the city council on August 14th, 2025. Now on to regular agenda item A. Angela?
Thank you. Consider application P-25-03 Grace Acres Subdivision Phase Two, filed by ETRH Development LLC to plat approximately 8.309 acres of abstract 66 of the William Ingalls survey tract 9-02 into 19 residential lots located on the west side of McCann Road, north of Wellington Lane. So the applicant is requesting to plat this property into 19 residential lots located here on McCann Road, just north of the post office. There are several outstanding items on their punch list that needs to be completed, and those items are listed in your packet. They have not finished those outstanding items as of this meeting or provided an estimate for the required infrastructure with security prior to this meeting. Staff recommends a conditional approval with the following requirement, that all punch list items are completed or the applicant provides an estimate and security for the outstanding items. Once all of those conditions are met, the plat would be considered approved. I would happy, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anybody have any questions? Does the commission have any questions for Angela at this time? All right. If there are no additional questions or comments, I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. As long as all other requirements are met.
Okay. All right. Actually, should there be a citizen comment on this one?
It does not require citizen comment.
Oh, does it not? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So, okay. Good deal. So we have a motion and a second, correct? Okay. Do we need a second? Okay. All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Onto regular agenda item B.
Thank you. Consider application P-25-04 Gilmer Road Commercial Development filed by Hinson and Wallen Ventures LLC to plat approximately 5.57 acres of abstract 186 D Sanchez survey tract 43-03, section seven into five commercial lots located on the southeast corner of Gilmer Road and Spring Hill Road. So the applicant is wanting to, is requesting to plat this property located on the southeast corner of Spring Hill Road and Gilmer Road into five commercial lots. The applicant has not installed any of the infrastructure that was required per the approved infrastructure plans. The outstanding items are listed in your attachment pack, in your packet. The applicant has not finished any of these items or provided an estimate with the required security prior to this meeting. Therefore, staff recommends a conditional approval with the following requirement, that all items on the punch list are completed or the applicant provides an estimate and security for the outstanding items. Once all of those conditions are met, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Does the commission have any questions for Angela at this time?
I do. Didn't we see this same plaque?
Y'all saw zoning change.
Zoning change.
Yes, sir. So they rezoned it from, I believe, residential to general retail. Yes, sir. So you saw zoning change, and then this is the plat.
Okay.
Yes, sir. This is the next step to divide the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Angela? All right. Commission, have any questions for the applicant on this item? All right. Any additional questions or comments? There are no additional questions or comments, I will now entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Onto regular agenda item C. Angela?
Thank you. Consider application RP-25-06 French Oaks Subdivision filed by Scadden Real Estate Alternatives LLC to replat Lot 1, Block 21, Thomas Manor, Unit 6 into 20 residential lots located east of Ruby Lane, north of Alta Street. So the applicant is requesting to plat this property into 20 residential lots located on French Drive, just north of Alta Street. There are a few minor outstanding items on their punch list that needs to be completed prior to plat approval. The applicant has, of course, has not finished these outstanding items prior to the meeting or provided an estimate with a security before this meeting. So staff recommends a conditional approval with the following requirement, that they complete the punch list items or provide an estimate with security. Once all those items are completed, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anyone have any questions for Angela at this time? This item? All right. Anyone have any questions for the applicant on this item? All right. If there are no additional questions or comments, I will now entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the recommended stipulations.
Okay.
Second.
Second to that? All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Onto regular agenda item D. Angela?
Thank you.
Commissioner Hamblin is going to refuse himself from, from this one.
So this is a public hearing will be held to consider application Z-25-15 filed by the Martin House requesting a rezone from multifamily two to office zoning district for Lot 2, Block 2, Garfield Edition, located at 601 West Avalon Avenue. So the applicant, which is the Martin House, is requesting a rezone of the property seen here on the zoning map. The current property is zone multifamily. They were requesting to rezone this property to office to allow for the Martin House to be located, to build, construct their new offices at this location. West Avalon is classified as a local street and is maintained by the City of Longview. This type of development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent uses, therefore the request does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you, Angela. You need, go ahead. I was just going to say, does anybody on the commission have any questions for staff on this item?
Is that the, is that the piece of land that's west of the building?
So it's, it's currently, I believe, the Martin House is to the north of it. Paula Martin Jones is directly to the east. This is where the track is, if you've driven down Avalon. Yeah.
Like T-ball there.
That dates you.
Yeah, it does. It does.
Any other additional questions for Angela from the commission? All right. Is the applicant present? Hello, if you could state your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Roxanne Stevenson. I'm the CEO of the Martin House Children's Advocacy Center. My home address is PO Box 823, Harlton, Texas.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant on this item?
I want to show you a picture.
Okay. I'm happy to show it. We are super excited to announce, we're actually doing a public launch tomorrow announcing our capital campaign to build this beautiful new 10,000 square foot facility. We are in the business of child abuse prevention and intervention. We feel like the children that need the safety and healing services that we can provide deserve a center like this. It's going to be a boon for our community as well. I think it's going to speak volumes that we are a community that takes, taking care of our children seriously. Our, our board and staff and capital campaign committee have worked for the last three years on fundraising efforts. Our total goal is $6.25 million, and tomorrow we'll be announcing how far we've accomplished to achieve that goal.
Awesome. Thank you, Roxanne. Appreciate it. Any additional questions for applicant at this time?
Put your other one up there.
This is the floor plan. I do want to state that children and families would come here for services as needed. They would never be housed here. We're not any kind of daycare facility or housing facility.
Okay. All right.
What do you guys provide? What, what are some of the things that you do there?
So, thank you for asking. So when children are reported to be victims of sexual or physical abuse and investigators have started looking into a potential crime, the first time we meet a child and their family is when they come to our center for a forensic interview. And that is so that the child has an opportunity to tell their story about what may have happened to them, and they're talking to a trained professional at our child-friendly, child-focused office, rather than being interviewed at the police department by a detective or a CPS caseworker at their office. So while investigators are sitting in the adjacent room watching the interview live, the child is only talking to one person, but the investigators are getting all of their information and their questions answered while the child is only talking to one person. So after that forensic interview, that's when investigators can focus on the needs of the case while we turn our focus on the needs of the children and family. So ongoing advocacy support, counseling, medical exams, referrals to other resources as needed. We want to walk beside those children and families for as long as they need our assistance.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Awesome. All right. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any in support of this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Are there any in opposition to this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Any additional questions or comments? There are no additional public, additional questions or comments, I will close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
All right. Second? Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto regular agenda item E. Angela?
Okay. I'll wait for Heath to come back in. Okay. Item E, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z-25-16 filed by the City of Longview requesting a rezone from multifamily two to townhome zoning district for lots one through 17, Block 1, Cotton Place Subdivision, located along Flagstick Park. So staff is requesting a rezone of these properties seen here on the zoning map from multifamily to townhome zoning district located along Flagstick Park. Currently, there are several single-family homes in this neighborhood and one townhome located in this subdivision. Previously in 1974, this lot was rezoned from single-family four to multifamily for the construction of townhomes. However, both single-family homes and townhomes were constructed within this subdivision. The previous zoning ordinance did allow single-family homes and townhomes in multifamily zoning district. However, the current UDC does not. Therefore, these properties are considered non-conforming. In order to correct this, staff is requesting a rezone of these properties to bring them in compliance in regards to zoning. Townhome zoning district would allow for townhomes and single-family homes within this zoning district by right. This rezoning would alleviate issues with any future permitting and possible sales of these properties. Staff finds that the zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore their request does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Angela. Anyone on the commission have any questions for Angela on this item? All right. Is the applicant present?
Oh, staff, we are the applicant.
Yes. So, yes. Just checking to see if you were. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant at this time? Again, no. So, okay. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any in support of this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Are there any in opposition to this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. Any additional questions or comments? Being none, I will now close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Item approved. Angela, onto item F.
Thank you. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z-25-17 filed by V and N Investments requesting a rezone from office to single-family four zoning district for abstract 186 D Sanchez survey tract 15-01, section five, located on the southwest corner of Gilmer Road and Blaine Trail. So the applicant is requesting to rezone this property seen here on the zoning map, located on the southwest corner of Gilmer and Blaine Trail, from office zoning to single-family four zoning. So in 2008, this property, the developer rezoned this property along with the neighborhood behind it from agricultural to single-family four and office zoning district. However, the current property owner would like to rezone this to single-family four to build a single-family home. Blaine Trail is classified as a local street and is maintained by the City of Longview, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Angela. Anybody on the commission have any questions for Angela at this, on this item? All right. Is the applicant present? All right. And I guess the commission didn't have any questions for the applicant. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any in support of this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Are there any in opposition to this, this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Any additional questions or comments? If there are no additional questions or comments, I will now close the public hearing, and I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Item approved. Onto regular agenda item G. Angela?
Thank you. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z-25-18 filed by Parker and Sons Investment LLC requesting a rezone from office to single-family five zoning district for lots five and six, Block 7, New City Block 19, North Cut Heights, located at 209 North Cut Avenue. So the applicant is requesting to rezone this property from office to single-family five located at 209 North Cut Avenue. Currently, there is a single-family home located on this property, and the property owner would like to keep it as a single-family home, therefore they would like to rezone this property to single-family five in order for it to be compliant with the current UDC. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and surrounding uses, therefore their request does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you, Angela. Anybody on the commission have any questions for Angela this time? All right. Is the applicant present? All right. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any?
I'm here, but I'm not the applicant.
Okay. Okay. If you want to come, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I don't, I think, if you have questions, absolutely, but I think you have.
Anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any in support of this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Are there any in opposition to this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Any additional questions or comments? There are no additional questions or comments, I will now close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. A second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Item approved. Onto regular agenda item H. Angela, thank you.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD-25-01 filed by RB Sandrini Farms LP requesting to rezone approximately 1.2644 acres of abstract 258 PP Rain survey tract 47, section seven, from general retail to planned development general retail for a gas station with convenience store located at the southwest corner of West Loop 281 and McCann Road. So the applicant is requesting to rezone this property seen here at the southwest corner of West Loop 281 and McCann Road from general retail to planned development general retail for a gas station with convenience store. The applicant is proposing to construct a approximately 5,000 square foot convenience store with gas station. The store will have a 10-foot front setback from Loop 281 with the rear of the building facing Loop 281. The UDC does require that a 25-foot front setback is required in general retail zoning district. The applicant applied for variance in May but was denied due to a lack of a hardship. The applicant does have more parking than what is required by the UDC, and self-imposed hardship should not be considered when granting variances. After further discussions with the applicant, they inform staff that they need the extra parking for staff and customers. So the best option to move forward would be to rezone this property to a planned development for general retail. This gives them the flexibility for setbacks while providing greater development standards than traditional zoning regulations would require. In 2015, the City of Longview adopted a comprehensive plan with great deal of citizen input. In 2024, it was updated. Throughout the comprehensive plan, it was discussed strengthening, throughout the comprehensive plan, it discusses strengthening, strengthening Longview's image, identity and character to foster a distinctive and appealing place to visit and live. It further mentions promoting aesthetically pleasing design for retail and commercial land uses located at our major intersections. In order to follow the guidelines outlined within our comprehensive plan, the applicant is proposing a false entrance feature with windows on the rear and an eyebrow awning over it so that it will not have the appearance of a rear-facing building. The applicant will provide cross-access as shown on the plans for any future cross-access to both adjacent properties. Additional landscaping will be provided along McCann Road and Loop 281 to mitigate the appearance that the rear is facing Loop 281. The site will follow all of the other general retail zoning regulations such as sign regulations, landscaping, and parking. And throughout the development process, the site will meet the requirements set forth in the UDC and all other City of Longview codes. McCann Road and West Loop 281 are classified as principal arterial roadways and are maintained by TechStot. Access management is essential to avoid traffic congestion and delays caused by turning movements for vehicles entering and exiting driveways. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you, Angela. Does the commission have any questions for Angela on this item?
So, with that, with that square footage, is there another way to place that building? Like, like, say, north-south with the rear facing to the, to the west?
I think the applicant is here, and they can probably better explain. I believe there may be a little bit of grading issues on that property, and so I think their engineer or Tariq there, the QT rep, can explain this better.
Hi, yes.
The reason I ask that is because you're going to, you're, you're in one of the, if not the, most visible intersections in town, and you're going to have a building facing, the rear facing to the, to the loop?
Absolutely.
And, and I'll, I'll also, or will you not get rear deliveries?
Yeah, so, yeah, I definitely understand where you're coming from. In regard to the, the rear facing, we, we worked with staff quite a bit to, you know, to beautify the rear of the store, as she mentioned, you know, the awning, the windows, and, you know, quite a few things to make the store look much better in the rear. We've also provided a lot of landscaping in order to, you know, accommodate those, those features. We have tried to, originally, we wanted to, to go with the building on the, I guess, on the south of the lot, which would have been facing Loop 281, but... the south of the lot, which would have been facing Loop two eighty-one, but due to grading challenges, we couldn't make that happen, so this is the best site plan that we could come up with in order to, you know, mitigate the grading issues and to, you know, make the best flowing site and the safest site for our customers.
Yeah, that's why I was asking about the, if it was going east-west, or, I'm sorry, north-south with, with the rear of the building facing to the west, that wouldn't...
Yeah, due to, we have our civil engineer here as well to be able to speak more to...
I mean, I know, obviously, we all know where the grade is because it drops off in the front, and it's a, you know, even with, when Red Lobster was there, still is, or whatever, you didn't see a great deal of the front of the building because it was, because of that grade, but I just wonder if, you know, what it's gonna look like with trucks, you know, in the rear of it all the time, and...
So, with the way the site is laid out, there won't be any trucks in the rear. The delivery will be in the front of the store, and will get brought through the store, but a truck wouldn't be able to access the rear of the store, so there will be not, will not be any trucks in the rear.
Trash pickup is gonna be in the rear, the front side, we're not gonna have all that.
So, I believe the trash enclosure's over there on the bottom left of the screen. You see there, it's gonna be on the furthest corner away from Loop two eighty-one or McCann Road.
Makes better sense. Yeah. We just don't want to have a, you know, an eyesore that's gonna be there for forty-five years, you know?
Yeah, of course.
Looking at it as a consumer, you know, and someone that's from here.
Absolutely, and we love to be a good neighbor. We don't want to, you know, be an eyesore or be a sore thumb, so we definitely want to do our best to accommodate the intent of the code and, you know, beautify the community.
Angela, can you explain exactly what the planned development would allow versus the general retail? Explain that again.
So, the planned development is allowing them to have a front ten-foot setback.
So, that's, that's the only difference between this particular plan development and what the UDC would require?
Well, besides that, we are asking that they, that they build the store to look like this with those elevations, so that's why we recommended doing the plan, well, or, well, we came to an agreement that the planned development was the right track, because if you got a variance or if they went with general retail, they could still technically face that rear towards, towards Loop two eighty-one, they would just have to meet the twenty-five-foot setback, and so they could put the rear towards, towards Loop two eighty-one, face it with a twenty-five-foot setback. With this, they're, they would be allowed to have a ten-foot setback off of Loop two eighty-one, but we would get this elevation.
So, go, go back to the, the plat, the site map there. So, we're just saying that it's ten-foot off of that line right there. You're still, what, seventy, eighty feet from the actual loop?
That is correct. Yeah.
Angela, do you see any negatives from that by having a ten-foot instead of the twenty-five? I know it's a very large right-of-way, but do you foresee any issues in the future?
I don't foresee any issues. My biggest concern was just making sure from a comprehensive plan standpoint, aesthetically, you know, you don't typically want to see the rear of buildings. That, I think that was our biggest, probably biggest concern, you know, like I said in the staff report, they really didn't have a hardship from a variance standpoint, and I think this was the best route in order to get, you know, for them to get the ten-foot setback and for staff, you know, we would get a better rear-facing building that would look aesthetically better and comply with our comprehensive plan.
Well, from looking at the plat, you don't have a lot of room behind the building facing Loop two eighty-one either, so no deliveries, no trash, no, it's just like a fake entrance, right?
That's, I believe that's correct, yes. It's just a, there, I think there is a door there, but they have ten-foot, it's a ten-foot setback, so they've got ten-foot from the, their building to the property line.
That's the bottom left one?
Yes, that's correct.
Are those faux windows or are those real windows?
They're, they're faux windows. That's really the back of the store where the employees, you know, have equipment back there, so it's not actually gonna be visible through there.
So, really, really, other than, I mean, it's gonna be the back of the store with a little awning and three faux windows.
It essentially looks just like the front of the store, only you can't see through it.
Signage on it, yep. How far is, how far is the current building, the Red Lobster? How far is it off of?
I'm not sure exactly how far it is, but it definitely meets the twenty-five, because they've got a lot of parking and look, go to the aerial. They're pretty far off of it. I would say at least, at least forty-foot, because you think about, drive aisles probably twenty to twenty-five, and then the parking spaces are eighteen, so they're probably, yeah, I mean, I would say fifty or sixty feet off the property line.
It's gonna be up there.
So, looking at a sight line, they'd be closer to the loop than anything else along there.
On McCann Road too, but closer to McCann Road.
Yeah, and then up here on McCann Road.
So, it would be more visible at the current building?
Yeah.
And with that said, there is roughly ninety-four feet from Loop two eighty-one to the property line, and that we still would have a ten-foot setback off of the property line, so we would be essentially meeting that intent with that ninety-four feet of right-of-way that separates us from the road, so we wouldn't be, you know, right up on there. We believe that meets the intent.
Right on top of that hill, it's gonna be very visible.
Highly visible.
At one of our, at our, probably arguably the most important intersection in town, really, but...
Are there any other questions for the applicant on this item?
Any other Plan Bs or Cs regarding placement of the building?
Whatever, civil engineer speak to that, but I do have a presentation as well if you want to see that.
So, I'm Tommy Vilbig, seventeen hundred Alma Drive. I'm the civil engineer that has worked on this project. So, we've looked at multiple different site layouts on this one, and the first one that we had was a more traditional layout, and it looked fine two-dimensionally, and then we started to do the grading plan for it, and it didn't work. This site has about twenty-five feet of fall from one side to the other. Makes it very challenging, and it's a relatively small site, to make everything work. There's a lot of special considerations with the gas station over the existing use of a restaurant. Biggest one is that the canopy has to be relatively flat, so that way cars are fully pumped up if they're at a steep angle, also just for the customers, that way doors aren't flying open and hitting the pumps when they're getting out. So, it makes it a lot more challenging to fit the things that need to be flat on a site like this. The other one is the fuel deliveries. The tanks have to be relatively flat, and if you've been to that Red Lobster site, I know we've been to it, it's steep. The parking lot on that side is steep. When you parked in some of those parking spaces and go to open your door, that door's gonna go flying open into the car next to you. So, that's one of our goals with this site plan, and the reason that it worked well is because the wing drive off of Loop two eighty-one is much longer. So, currently, it comes right into where the Red Lobster parking lot starts, and here we were able to lengthen that but still provide good circulation through the site and good access to the customers. So, really unique challenge on this site and kind of a unique, you know, opportunity here to, to have something different, but it's, it's, it was a big challenge to get it to layout correctly. So, we've looked at a lot of different site layouts for this property, and this is far and above the preferred option for QT, and we have other options, but they're not nearly as preferable as this one.
Because of the pitch?
Because of the grading.
And the regulatory you gotta do with your gas. Is it gonna have loop access or just McCann?
We've got an existing driveway on the loop.
Yeah.
And, and that was one of the other challenges, is those, both of those are text dot roadways, and so our driveway locations are kind of fixed. Text dot wouldn't let him, us move him any closer. It wouldn't help grading either way, but we can't really...
What about ingress and egress? The loop has a barrier in the middle.
Sure.
But McCann does not.
Right, so we'll be a right-in, right-out on the loop, and then we'll be a full access drive there on McCann Road, just like it is today.
Would that hill be graded in, would be graded down, any?
No, since that's text dot right-of-way, we don't have any plans to, to change the grades there.
To change the grade.
There's also a number of utilities there in that area, and we do plan, to y'all's point about it being up on the hill and visible, we do have additional landscaping planned there that should help shield kind of the back of that store and help beautify that corner. And I know text dot has a big landscaping island in the right-of-way there that they maintain as well.
Thank you. Tell me, any other questions?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any in support of this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Are there any in opposition to this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Any additional questions or comments?
I have one more question.
All right.
How many people do y'all normally employ at a location like that?
So, with each of our locations, we create roughly twenty-two new jobs, and store managers can make anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand a year, and starting off, managers can make anywhere from forty to sixty K a year. So, they aren't just, you know, any regular old job, they're pretty good-paying jobs, and yes, twenty-two jobs per, per new stores, the average.
What about hours of operation?
Hours, we are twenty-four hours, so we have morning shift, evening shift, overnight shift, and we have security measures in place to, you know, make sure everyone runs smoothly.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
You said you had a presentation.
Yes.
Is there anything in that presentation that we should know?
I'm really just, um, let me stand up. I'm really just talking about who, QuickTrip, who we are, and, you know, what we bring to the table, and how we aren't just, you know, a regular gas station, and, you know, how we take care of our stores in order to make sure that, you know, forty-five years down the road, we're still a good-looking store, and we aren't just, you know, another old gas station, so really just talking about how, who we are and some of the challenges with this site, so...
How many stores do y'all operate today?
We have over a thousand stores in operation, thirty thousand employees, so we've, we've started with one store in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and have grown up to, you know, be a pretty, pretty large store. Here we go.
Yeah, I've been in your stores before. You maintain them pretty clean.
Yeah, we are a private company, so that helps. Our largest expense is maintenance and, you know, taking care of our stores and making sure that we have the same offer across the stores, and there's just a few of the things that we do. We've been on Fortune's list of hundred best companies for, you know, fifteen-plus years. We regularly stay on Forbes's hundred top, top one hundred privately-owned companies. We're number twenty right now in the nation, so, you know, we're, we try to be the best. That's our, one of our, our main mottos, and we really want to, you know, be a good neighbor and take care of you all, so, like I said, we are a private-only company, so we can take better care of our stores than just, you know, the regular old gas station, and we, you know, we intend to do that, so...
Still headquartered in Tulsa?
Yep, corporate is still in Tulsa. That's where I started, actually. I moved down here a couple of years ago, but here's a little PowerPoint on our security. I've got three hundred and sixty-degree footage of the store at all times, 4K cameras, so police a lot of times love to come to our stores, even if nothing happened there, to, you know, talk to us and see if they can see something on our cameras. Another slide on that. We do offer really good food. I don't know if you guys have ever stopped by QuickTrip, but, you know, grab-and-go if you're in a hurry, or you can stop and order something. We got pizza, subs, all kinds of good stuff that you can grab and, you know, get back on the road, so here's our site plan as we already saw. Here's the rear elevation, which we beautified, which is, you know, we think it looks really good, and like I said, we are privately-owned, so we like to uphold that image and, you know, make sure everything looks good. Here's an elevation, which, this was created before we went ahead and added extra landscaping at the rear of the store, so it will be even more blocked off, and there will be more landscaping behind the store.
Would y'all be utilizing the existing Red Lobster sign?
Yeah, we'd use the exact same size, and, and we wouldn't be doing anything different. It'd just have our logos on it.
I was wondering if the existing sign is higher than it...
I, I don't know the information on the existing sign, but they would have to be compliant with current codes.
It'd be the same thirty-five feet.
So, do you see the green space being used?
This green space here?
Yeah.
So, that is text dot right-of-way, so we can't really use that.
I mean, just in general, for, I mean, I'm thinking about picnic tables or, you know, just thinking out loud.
No, I mean, we would side it. Text dot typically does require that, so it would look really good, but as far as us using it, we wouldn't...
Can't do that, okay.
Wouldn't be allowed to. I think the next slide is also another image there, and, like I said, we're just trying to make it look the best we can with what we have there, and we're really trying to, you know, be a good neighbor and provide a good-looking store.
I hope it looks like that one.
Huh?
I hope it looks like that one.
Oh, yeah, oh, for sure.
You have jobs to go around and set these things up, and then you're on to the next town, and I'm like, man, we're gonna be stuck with a convenience store. If it looks like crap, it's gonna be really disappointing.
No, and like I said...
It should look like this because of the planned development. Yes, and so, yes.
Because we're all living here.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, like I said, we have a really high maintenance expense, so we do intend to keep this building looking just like that, so we aren't, we like to do the right thing, so make sure to take care of you guys.
Typically, I would, from my days of traveling... I would picture these stores, and actually, I've been in your stores quite a bit from traveling. I, from what I can remember, your stores are on major traveling highways. How many of these stores, or not how many, do you have many of these stores, like in, not necessarily the center of town, but in the traffic area of town? Like you say, and, you know, we drive by every day, we see it every day.
Yeah, absolutely. Our business model actually started off with, you know, smaller stores like this in, in the city, so if you go to Tulsa, there's stores all over the city, and it's kind of changed over time, but this is a site that, I'm not in the, you know, the business of selecting the sites, but this is a site that we, you know, ran the numbers and looked at everything and saw fit for a good location, so I don't have too much info on that, but this is a, a site that we've done before.
No trucks?
No trucks.
No trucks, yeah. That was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, no trucks on this one. This is a smaller footprint store, so like the other one over that we're building is, that's a truck stop and it is, not a truck stop, but a travel center. It's got trucks and, you know, the full nine yards, so this one is a much smaller footprint.
Very good then.
Any additional questions? All right. If there are no additional questions or comments, I will now close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, that's for that?
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All, any opposed, say no.
I'm gonna be a no.
All right. Motion carries?
No, Heath.
Yes.
Heath.
All right. Thank you all. Angela will now provide us with the staff update.
Certainly. We haven't had a council meeting, so the one item for the draft-through window will be brought to council next week, because they canceled a council meeting. However, we did accidentally skip one discussion item at the beginning of the agenda, so I'd like to bring that one up.
Yes, absolutely.
And we need to discuss and appoint a Planning and Zoning Commission Vice Chairperson. So, city council appoints the chairperson of every board and commission, but they, it's a, you know, y'all will appoint yourselves a vice chair, and so typically, we go off of seniority, but it's up for discussion for y'all to decide who, who wants to be the vice chair and who wants to volunteer to be the vice chair of Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right. I think Heath would make a great vice chair.